Will the city clerk, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Bowen.
Here.
Councilmember Bash. Mayor Pro Tim Brenmeyer, here. Mayor Newton.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you Dana. Robin, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Dana, do we have any public comments? Thank you. Lisette? Begin the workshop, please.
Good morning, council, council members. We're here for our budget workshop number three. We are going to start with our preliminary budget for our capital improvement project, and then go back to our general fund. And with that, I'll hand it over to Joshua Kelholt.
Thank you Lisette, I'm a city council. So this is a continuation of the previous workshop. We'll be beginning with the capital improvement program budget. So the capital improvement plan is to help establish the priorities and programs for the city's existing infrastructure, streets, roads, equipment, and technology. This provides some strategic direction as far as priorities and what will be most beneficial to the community as directed by city council. This is a five-year looking at the upcoming fiscal year and four subsequent years for funding. As part of this process, we are relaying what the budget is for these future years within the budget process for council to review and deliberate. So within the overall CIP budget itself is overall its funding between the various different areas, so such as Measure R, gas tax, general fund, and water and sewer rates. Within each area has available resources of fund balance, so 27.7 million. We have incoming revenues or transfers from other various different sources of 39.2 million. This is to fully fund the 38.9 million of CIP projects that are being proposed within the CIP budget. This will still leave at the end of the next fiscal year 27.9 million of fund balance to be used for future capital projects. Of the various different projects, we have the chart going into all different types of projects that there are. First and foremost is street improvements is our largest capital project source of a total of 18 projects of a total of 15.4 million. And we have a total of about nine or 10 projects going into the next fiscal year with the various other projects that are existing, because as some of these capital projects can extend into two or more years depending on the scale and scope of the project. For this particular area, I'd like to pass it over to our facilities and maintenance director Amanda.
Thank you Josh. Good morning, city council. So tonight, we're gonna go, or today, this morning, we're gonna go over facility improvement projects. We have two new projects, 11 existing projects, and a request for $4 million. So the first highlighted project is the HVAC system replacement project. This is in the amount of $900,000, and that is for Fire Station 47. It's to replace the original HVAC system at that facility. The next highlighted project is the facilities and maintenance offices in the amount of $800,000. And that's for the Parks Yard at Fifth and Valley View and Ingalls Event Center. Those are two modular units that we are looking at. The next project is the facility roofing project, which is a roof hugger system at the hall in the amount of $600,000. And the final project is, highlighted project is the Marino Arena Lighting Project in the amount of $300,000, and that is to replace the lighting in Marino Arena. Two of these projects, I do want to highlight that we are working with the Inland Regional Energy Network, and that's for cash for kilowatts. And so for every kilowatt saved, we get $2 back. So we have had them review the plans for the projects, and also we have submitted a letter of intent for that. The next category is fleet maintenance. We have two new vehicles, two existing vehicles, and a request for $224,000. The first vehicle is a stake bed utility truck, and so this truck is used by Parks and Ingalls crews. The project cost, the vehicle cost is $100,000. And this will replace the 1989 stake bed that has been in operation for 36 years. The next vehicle is the Norco Citizens Patrol Vehicle in the amount of $40,000. And this would replace the vehicle that's been in operation for 16 years. And then the final vehicle that we have is the Sheriff Motorcycle in the amount of $44,000, and this is to replace Deputy Corlou's motorcycle.
Pass it over to Matt Bridro, our IT manager, to go over information technology improvements.
Yes. Correct. Correct. There is, there's more. These are just highlighted vehicles where there's more in the queue, and I could pull that up. Yes.
Let's just emphasize the major projects that are going into, that are new projects within those particular areas. That may not be all encompassing. We refer you to the CIP book that has a full detail by area.
Do you want me to answer that? We are self-insured, so we, the motorcycle did go out to auction, but no, we will have to replace that motorcycle.
Mayor and city council, for the information technology improvements for next fiscal year for our CIP, we are looking at an ERP financial system assessment. So our current system is sunsetting in 2029. So due to the complexity of these systems used throughout the city, we need to start planning. So this assessment, we're looking at identifying any of the inefficiencies and requirements for the departments, and we're also not purchasing the system just yet. This is just getting the planning phase of that process going. Part of that also, we are looking at an information technology server room relocation and upgrade. So currently, our room here is a, it's grown organically. It doesn't really have the right amount of rack spacing or any of the physical protections that most server rooms have for a city our size. So what we're looking at is expanding and also doing backup power, you know, HVAC zoning, that type of, type of resiliencies there. And then as part of, on here as well, we have a security system upgrade. So we're currently phasing out our current system and going with a digital system. We're upgrading different fire panels, security panels, and digital surveillance, replacing these analog systems. It's a phased upgrade over a period of four years to spread out costs, and this also coincides with the structured connectivity project that we have as part of the CIP as well. Part of that is because we're currently using CAT 5 cabling in our buildings, and the newest standard is about CAT 8, so we're a few versions behind. And we're also looking at our telephone system migration and upgrade, so we have to do that project regardless, since our company filed for bankruptcy earlier this year. So with that, the total request that we're looking at is 667,500.
Over to park improvements.
So we have no new projects for this category. We have five existing projects and a request for $480,000. The first highlighted project is the citywide park enhancements in the amount of $200,000. And this is to upgrades to our parks, like benches, signs, anything really in our parks, and it really, this funding really comes in handy. The next highlighted project is the Pike's Peak Park lighting upgrades in the amount of $150,000, and this is to replace the lights at Pike's Peak Park. A lot of them are missing, they have broken shrouds, and they are in need of replacement.
We have a public safety improvement project, the Heli Hydrant that is new. This will allow first responders to save critical time and effectively fight fires by offering a strategically placed quick fill pilot operated water source. We are requesting $250,000 for this project. As well, we would be looking into grant opportunities to determine if that can be funded through grants. And this, we also have to find a location for it as well that's not included in this.
Storm drain improvements. So we have no, no new projects. We have a long list of projects going on right now. The N3 extension project is actually a significant one. It's a, it's a large 48-inch RCP concrete storm drain that's extending Infis Street from the Interstate 15 to Valley View Avenue. It's being done in conjunction with the county flood control. They're actually, in the end of the day, will be maintaining that main line because of the magnitude of it. We're also coordinating with our street improvement folks, so to make sure that everything lines up. So once that storm drain gets in, we widen the street, everything's in the right spot, and we basically mitigating that flood, flooding that happens in that roadway currently. At lateral S5E, this is the storm drain on Hillside Avenue between Third and Fourth Street. That's picking up a low spot. This is a very, very challenging project because initially, we were gonna have to spend probably double what we have to remove existing facilities that the county had put in to a, to a lower level. However, one of the neighbors jumped in there and gave us an easement for nothing, so we could basically assist these people. And the project went from 1.2 million dollars to about 600 grand, so it was super nice. That's gonna be, we actually awarded the project. They'll be probably start digging holes in the next two weeks or so. Oh, oh yeah, wow. And then on top of that, of course, we're coming with the street project next, next year, or this, this next fiscal year, that's gonna complement what we did over there to make it nice with curb and gutter. Street improvements. Second Street, River Road to Hamner Avenue. This project has been awarded. They anticipate starting at the end of the month, once school is out. This is curb and gutter and asphalt improvements from Hamner Avenue to Second Street. There's areas that are already done, improved. We're gonna skip all those areas, but it's gonna be a nice project. Hopefully, the traffic's not gonna be too bad. There will be some closures on those areas, but they'll be able to reroute through Kips or Pacific or those types of streets. Third Street paving project, that one's almost done too. We're basically waiting to stripe on those areas. That one went from Valley View to, actually to Hamner. Originally was supposed to go to Norco College, but they built the street for us, so we basically omitted it from the project itself. That one went very well. I don't think we have any change orders on it. We'll probably have some, some, some extra budget. We actually, just real quickly, we had about $38,000 in fencing to put on that trail, and it was at $300 a linear foot. So what Chad did before his, before his departure here is, he basically included the fencing for that project as part of the trail fence project. So instead of paying like $300 a linear foot, we paid $18 a linear foot. So we saved an enormous amount of money. So that was nice. Hillside Avenue, Third and Fourth Street, that's kind of what we just spoke about. Where, that, that design's almost finished. Once we get the storm drain in, that design's gonna put curb and gutter in there to kind of alleviate some of the flooding that happens in those areas. And Valley View Avenue, Fourth and Fifth Street, same thing, curb and gutter, trying to pick up all those low points and drive people out. Trail improvements. Norco Elementary Trail Project. This is a project to figure out how we, to address the consistent erosion and DG issue that is basically plaguing the Norco Elementary School. Is the only school in all of Norco that actually has a trail in front of it. Every other school has a trail on the opposite side. So it's a challenge because one of the only ways things are due to stop erosion is to pave it, and which is, you know, you don't talk about that in horse trails. So, so we're looking on that, trying to come up with solutions. Trail fencing replacement project, obviously, it's, it's ongoing. We're basically finishing up our fiscal year 24, 25 program. We actually had to add a lot of other streets because we were under on some of our quantities. And then the ongoing trail maintenance, obviously, we got Nova doing their thing out there and making things better for everybody. Water improvements. Corydon Water Main Line Replacement. This is a water main line replacement, replacing the old 10-inch CMLNW water line from, with a new 12-inch duct to line pipe from River Road to Fifth Street. Aging, it's a very aging system. We actually had, when I first came here, a water line bust twice and knocked a guy's roof off. I think it's where one of our coworkers' parents live. So that'd be a nice project. We're probably got 80% plans right now, so that's basically ready to go. The Temescal Avenue Main Line Replacement is Shell Friday. We're just waiting for the improvement of the, the rate increases, so we can actually afford to pay, to put that in there. That is between Fifth and Sixth Street. Once that goes in, we're gonna be coming back in to put a new street in Temescal Avenue, that same stretch of road, just north of where we basically terminated our improvements at your house. And then Sixth Street Water, Water Line Replacement Project. This is a very significant water line replacement that goes from Sierra Avenue to California. We have yet to begin a significant design process because of the magnitude of the work. We actually have a crew out there probably the next about month or two, doing, conducting over 50 potholes in that, in that street to identify infrastructure like gas, electric, sewer, water, all those type things. So when we do the plans, they can kind of know where everything's at and go through with the design process.
That brings us back over to
Couple of questions, back and through. On water improvements, what was Corydon Water Main Line, what, the scope, what was the limits from river to?
Fifth Street, or to Norco Drive.
On Corydon?
Yes.
To Fifth? After the main line repave, what will we be reimbursed from, was that the Corps of Engineer, whoever those knuckleheads were doing all that work down there at Corydon staging area, were to get reimbursed on Fifth Street and Corydon for the truck traffic?
Yeah, I believe there's a portion of that. I'd have to basically follow back up with them, but that's something that Orange County Public Works Department in conjunction with the Corps of Engineers is going through.
Okay.
So, yeah, but as soon as
Do you recall the, were they gonna do the work, or are we just gonna get cash and loot?
It's gonna be a financial issue, where they're gonna basically make an assessment and then give us the money, and then we can use it for the street improvement work.
Okay. And then on storm drain improvements, on MDP, N3 extension on Fifth Street? What were the limits again on that?
From the Interstate 15 to Valley View Avenue.
Okay. Where are we in the queue with the repaving then of Fifth Street? And I thought that was gonna go like Temescal to the freeway?
Uh, I'd have to double check. I know the plan, the street plans are done. We're waiting on two things. The completion, design completion of the storm drain, which unfortunately, Riverside County Flood Control is inspect, are reviewing those plans, and they're slow. And then the other thing is getting Edison stuff out of our way, which, you know that.
So we're gonna have to do this, same messing around with Edison on Fifth Street as we are right now with, on Fourth Street?
Correct.
And do we have any budget line item or set aside for the, the actual street work on Fifth?
I believe it is in the budget. It just got pushed out some time, some, some years because of the unknown with the completion of the storm drain and Edison's
Got it. Okay. And then just last, real quick, just a quick update on Edison and on Fourth Street repaving.
Just moving forward, I mean, I know that they, when we talked to them, they had a epiphany that the plans had sat so long that they're, they just kind of shrugged their shoulders, and then Chad basically
Right.
kicked them hard.
But do we have a timeframe on when they're gonna think about it?
Well, they're thinking about it. It's just more or less them getting their plans completed and then implementing them, which, you know, can take some time. But I can follow up and figure that out for you.
Follow up on that, thanks. Joshua.
Brings us over to Measure R budget recommendations. So this was the preliminary budget that was brought before the Measure R Subcommittee for consideration, and so within there, they have a total of operation, request of 18.6 million for the upcoming fiscal year, ranging from general operational costs of 11,000, trail maintenance expenses of 700,000, and then some of the highlights that were discussed are Measure R funded, being funded of a total of 17.9 million. We have expected revenues of $8 million coming into Measure R tentatively for the next fiscal year. That with its available fund balance will still leave a small amount within fund balance of $802,000 at the end of the fiscal year, pending a completion of all those capital projects. Within all this, the 17 million that was being funded by Measure R, super majority of it is being, of 63% is being done for street improvements. Other areas such as trails and IT and facilities are also being used as part of those funds. Of the 17 million, 11.6 of that is going to be 13 projects of 11.7 million, and the second largest being 3.9 million of three new projects and nine existing projects for facility improvements. With that, staff remains available to address any questions or comments in regards to CIP budget specifically.
Does council have any questions to staff? Kevin?
And the, the hall, the roof. I'm not gonna be able to support that because, simply because I think the whole building is suspect. And I'm wondering, I know maybe it sounds impossible, but I'm wondering if there is some way we could figure out, because my understanding is there may even be foundation problems. The kitchen can't be used, so in essence, it's not a facility that we can actually really use to its full extent.
So the kitchen is currently operational, so the kitchen can be used. As part of this design, because we currently are in design for this roof hugger system, what they're trying, what they're doing right now is they're conducting structural calculations on the building, and they want to determine if the huggers, if the structure itself can support this hugger system. So really, that's gonna be the catalyst to see where we go from here. So as soon as I get that report, we will kind of make a determination on where we're gonna go with the hall.
And then I didn't see anything from, with Riley Gym or anything with Scout House. Just to put a bug in your ear, I know we're not talking about him today, but Scout House is falling apart, literally falling apart. And then the Riley's Gym, what was the issue with the air conditioner or the, there was a fire?
There was, one of our swamp coolers, the guys were conducting maintenance on one of the swamp coolers, and the swamp cooler did, the motor caught on fire, but that was replaced. And I think when we talk about Scout House and Community Center and Riley Gym, I'm really interested to see the Parks Needs Assessment, once that's completed, you know, what their determinations are and what they found, and really go from there. And I think that's the, the nice part about having that assessment, is it really gives us a plan, a master plan on, on our facilities, and where our programming's going to be, and how we move forward, and ship away at that every year in the CIP program.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Kevin, no questions? Councilmember Bowen, questions?
Neil Weaver Hall, if it, we do decide to get rid of, you know, to rebuild it completely, the back half where that drainage, I mean, I'm just getting on board with all this stuff, but years, I've always said, why don't we put, can we make sure that that gets put in the budget to put drainage pipes through there so that gets a bigger back area that we can, so that's basically what I'm looking at.
Absolutely, and I've heard from several rodeo committees, give us more parking and move that, you know, our storage area down to the back of the hall. So yeah, that's something that we would definitely consider.
Okay, great. Robin? Amanda? Let's go back to Kevin's comments on Nellie Weaver Hall. And Amanda and I met, we developed questions for the structural engineer a couple of months ago. My first question is, why has it taken them so long to address the calculations if that existing building can receive this roof system that we're looking at? And is this just gonna be a placeholder for now?
Yes.
These dollars?
Yes, these dollars are just a placeholder until we can actually get a final report from the structural engineer. So there were no structural calculations on the building that we could find that were existing. So they had engineers come out, I believe about two weeks ago, to do a field assessment of the building. I expect a final report in the next week or two.
Okay. And Kevin, just so you know that, I've argued with Amanda, this is a good roof system, but I'm not in favor of it. I think this is more like taking our two old ag buildings and re-roofing those, instead of looking at the bigger picture. The dilemma you have come this next winter is how long will that blue tarp last with the sandbags? To keep the building from leaking?
I don't want another Riley Gym lipstick on a page.
And we'll definitely weigh, you know, the pros and cons of each and, and come back to you with a recommendation.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none? What would you like? A recommendation, direction?
This is part of the overall budget process, so at this point, we addressed all preliminary questions. We'll then move forward into the main budget aspect and then the capital project, capital projects is part of the overall budget approval. So as long as we address any clarifying questions, we should be good to move forward to the main budget.
Good.
All right. So it brings us back to the budget that was discussed at the last workshop. For a refresher for the council is we were previously projecting total revenues of twenty-nine point five million, expenditures of thirty-five point two million with a deficit of five point seven million. Utilizing that five points, with the impact of that five point seven million, that would have brought our starting fund balance from thirty-nine point, thirty-four point nine million to twenty-nine point two million. Based on feedback discussions and direction from council, we, we went back and applied savings, removed and reduced certain areas. And we also had staff go into their individual departments and see what we could reduce, as well as a second round of, because within those departments. So highlights of some of those is we did have some savings from the CALPAR contract due to some state decision direction that caused the change. Based on council change from option two B to one B, this would have a reduction of two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. We also removed, this is the general fund specific portion of three authorized positions. The impact of all these special events was fifty-three thousand dollars. Programs was twenty-three thousand dollars and other department reductions of seventy-eight thousand dollars. These are, these reductions are listed in detail in the handouts that are before each council member. And staff remains available to address questions or clarifications on any of those reductions. So taking these updated reductions and savings that have been identified since the last presentation, this would bring our updated projected deficit to four point eight million dollars, reduction of eight hundred and ten thousand from the previous projection. So this would still put us in, still solid position from a fund balance perspective of having that four point eight million, of still having a thirty point one million fund balance if the full deficit was impacted within the general fund. Now from here is we do have various different options to help address this particular deficit to help balance the budget, if you will. So this can be either one or a culmination of these options, which can include just running it through fund balance, utilizing those reserves. We do have some excess savings within our internal service funds, mainly our equipment replacement fund has six point seven million available. Information Technology Fund has almost two million. Measure R has thirteen point one. The OPEB and Pension Stabilization Funds are available, but however, it is staff's recommendation that we save these for true rainy days situations because when you get to pension funding and for those, it will reach a kind of saturation point where it will have a high peak that needs to be funded, that likely won't be able to keep up with revenues as they continue to grow over the years. So that's the intent of these trust funds is to help in those rainy days. So our strategy is once it hits that peak, we would have then applied those funds against those. That would be in those respective budget years. So with that, it is staff's, yeah. Oh, with donations, we are, are gonna be applying donations first against any special events that those are tied to. Based on direction of the council, so we will be applying that on a going forward basis and we are doing a reconciliation to ensure that any donations are applied first before utilizing general fund dollars for those particular programs or projects or events, excuse me. So right now is to provide direction to staff based on the data brought before you is give us direction or a final decision on what you would like us to do with that deficit is either apply it against the reserves, defer some projects. We can reallocate some, some expense items to different priorities. We have already gone through and done some funding projects and programs and services. Further discussions can be had on that. Transfers from internal service funds such as equipment replacement can be done. In the long term, staff is exploring additional revenues in the future such as additional tax revenues, increases to TOT, as that has been explored in a number of years. And then a public safety parcel tax has potential that those will be a couple of years out at minimum. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield to you for discussion and direction.
Did you go back to your first slide? Or? Next one? Next one? Okay. So correct me if I'm wrong, that before we start with questions from the other members, I thought our direction was a menu. Is this the menu you're supplying us?
Yes. So this was the actual dollar value impact of the discussions that were had. So these are being presented to you as options. They can either be re-explored, re-discussed at this point. So nothing's final, nothing's final yet.
Well, that part I know. Okay. All right. I'll just tell you right out of the gate before, reduction of special events, reduction of programs, twenty-three thousand dollars is all you could find. And other department reductions for seventy-eight. Before we get more into it, I'm disappointed.
So, so the reduction of the programs were the ones that actually council determined which ones to remove from the budget. So those were, if I recall the camp, sorry. I could put those up, but those were the specific ones that council directed for us to remove. On the other department reductions, it netted out to a seventy-eight thousand dollar reduction. I do have the detail of line items that staff went through, so I'll pass that out to you. That net also including adding back the, like, some had increases due to adding back the fire full-time inspector and the conversion for the fire.
The inspector?
The inspector and the the deputy fire marshal, sorry. So that was added on there.
I thought we were gonna leave those out.
We were instructed...
Till we found out if we were getting our full value.
So that is part, we did add them, but I, our interpretation was that to add those on there. The determining the management of those positions is, is different from actually having those services, but that is part of the net. And I'll, I'll pass this out with, so you guys have a detail of all the line items that were changed.
Thank you. Oh, I do.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to refresh the council on which programs were cut to answer your first question?
Thank you. Yes, please.
So in terms of youth and adult sports, basketball summer camp was removed and volleyball summer camp was removed. In terms of youth services, We People was left in with the direction to assess the curriculum to a more agriculture focus. That was a four to one vote. Spring camp was removed, summer camp was removed, creativity camp was removed and Tiny Tot Variety Sports was removed, leaving the gingerbread build with Santa and the Tiny Tot Olympics.
Okay, thank you. And I don't want to belabor on that, but with those reductions and elimination of some of those programs, were there any full-time or part-time positions eliminated?
Part-time salaries were eliminated from that, so they budget based on the total of part-time. So that, the allocation that was part-time salaries for those programs are included in that cost.
All right. Robin, would you like to start questions, comments?
I'm gonna start with some general comments, kind of more of a philosophical discussion, I guess, from the perspective of going through the budget process and just my own experiences as a state employee as well. In this process, it's my opinion that it is not the job of council to make the cuts. The organization is working at a deficit and the employees and staff should be able to come together and figure out where those cuts are gonna be made. It is not our job, we are not the boots on the ground, we're not doing the day-to-day work. And to ask council to make the cuts, in my opinion, would lead to a few things. Number one, unhappy employees, because we're making decisions that affect your day-to-day that we have no decision, no idea of how those cuts would impact your day-to-day operations, which then would lead to an unhealthy morale and kind of culture in the organization. So I think this idea of having council make the cuts is backwards and unhealthy for the organization. As a state employee and going through the recession in different times in my employment, I would rather be told, hey, we have some lean times coming. You guys need to do some self-reflection and decide where you want those cuts to be made. Like, we need you to cut forty percent or whatever the case may be. So then I can decide in my job, what my priorities are and what I need bare bones to make sure that I can do the job that I've been asked to do by the organization. That would not be the school board member's decision, in my opinion. So in that respect, I, I'm disappointed as well. As we look at that list, council made five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of cuts and staff made seventy-eight. That doesn't seem to me like a team that's working together to try and eliminate a deficit at all. And it's, it's frustrating. I would like to see direction go back to the departments that they all have to cut a certain percentage with the goal of getting that deficit cut by fifty percent at minimum, if not more. It's fiscally irresponsible to carry a deficit. And again, I haven't been on council that long. We've always approved a deficit budget with the exception of last year, where we'd have a one million dollar deficit or something like that. And again, we can call it Norco luck, we can, you know, say that budgets were fiscally conservative, whatever the case may be, we'd come back at the end and have a balanced budget because we'd have a big project or we'd have something kind of come through that would help us get to where we need it to be. I, again, don't think that this council should be making those decisions, because I'll tell you right now, if it comes to that, my impression is gonna be that either the staff doesn't care enough to make the decisions in their own departments and in what they're doing, which is unfortunate. Or that we really just don't have a handle on what we're doing in our day-to-day and what our bare bones kind of staffing level should be to get the job done to serve the residents. And I just think it would end up like, we would cut staff and we would cut the wrong staffer. We would cut something that was super, super important and it would end up that the residents are unhappy and we do more damage than having a deficit. I don't, I don't know what else to say other than that, just from a philosophical kind of policymaking group, like it's not our job to do your day-to-day budgeting and saying, you guys need a box of pencils over, you know, a box of staples or whatever the case may be, like. We just don't have the knowledge or any, anything like that to do that. The other thing that's been kind of disappointing is we've had staff come to council meetings and are, are watching the budget process and, you know, are upset or passionate or whatever. I haven't gotten one phone call about the budget process, not one. Hey, Robin, I can see you have concerns about community service programs. Can we chat about it? Can we talk about it? Nothing. If I was a staff member sitting in a board meeting and I saw the policymakers asking questions that I knew as a staff member I could answer, I would be reaching out to that person and answering those questions. Nothing. Nothing. So again, I know everybody works hard and I know I've talked from here that we don't have a very deep bench, but I'm beginning to wonder if we have the right people on the bench at this time. So, you know, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but I want to have a frank discussion about what our real issues are as an organization and how we can collaborate and be a team to do what's best for staff, to do what's best for council and ultimately to do what's best for the residents, because every single one of us in this room, that's who we work for, is all the people that live here. So please take those into consideration as we're making our decisions today. My recommendation is gonna be that leadership goes back to departments and say, hey, we have to cut, your council made five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in cuts. We have a, you know, let's just say a four point nine million dollar deficit. Can you guys go back and figure out some way as an organization to cut another million, not counting the work that the council did for you already? So, and then the other thing I just wanted, want to put on the radar is looking at a little bit of reorganization as well and kind of thinking outside the box, like our homeless solutions program, you know, should that be something that's handled through the sheriff's office and our staffing there? Because a lot of the work's already done there. And that's not gonna be a cost savings, that's not gonna be a change from anything there. I think it's just gonna be more of a point of contact change in the beginning of, you know, who is sitting at, talking to, who are they working with? And what do those discussions look like? And again, that's not something that has to be done today, but I would like it looked at for sure. And I think that's all I have.
So. So I have to completely agree with Robin. I also have here in my notes that there should be more staff-driven solutions to debt. I kind of feel like we're getting a lot of presentations, but no real solutions from leadership. And then when were we gonna get that fee schedule survey that you were talking about at the last meeting?
That'd be presented to council in the first quarter in draft form for review and discussion.
For when?
In the first quarter, so between approximately into July, early August is when you start seeing that draft.
Okay. And then, when was the last time there's ever been any kind of review of the program and event fee structure for all of our city programs and events, as compared to other cities? I know we're smaller, but money still costs the same here in Norco.
Best practices is every five years for cities to do a fee study. The last one was done, I think the update was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so this is our...
So we're completely due for a recheck?
Yes, and that's what the fee schedule is looking into.
Okay, and that'll also include the non-resident fee?
Correct.
Because I was doing quite a bit of research yesterday in, I was looking in Eastvale, I was looking in Corona, and how much those cities were charging for different kinds of events and programs. And Eastvale charges a fifteen dollar non-resident fee. So that was another thing I wanted to make sure we do. I also had some questions about, like, grant, grant research and intern support, in terms of, do we have anybody here at the city that can? I know that looking into grants is a very tedious process. I just wonder if maybe something like that could help us, especially with our homeless solutions. And then, I don't know if this is the right time, but I noticed that there's some pretty significant discrepancies in the sponsor or your partnership sponsors' events with attendance records, as compared to what the staff report. If there's significant discrepancies, so I'm wondering, which one is correct? Is the data in here correct? Or is the attendance record in our staff report correct? And I emailed this all to you yesterday, so I know you probably didn't have a time to take a look at it.
At this point, I would rely on the attendance information that was presented at the last budget workshop.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Comment on grants, were you recommending that, that we look into using like an inter, intern? In, in, intern?
Yes, and, you know, I'm still kind of learning this whole process myself. But if we have these interns, can we have somebody dedicated to looking into grants? And, because, I mean, from what I understand, I know some of the federal grants might be a little bit different, but we are in California, and, you know, there's a lot of things that are offered, and, you know, maybe there's some grants available that can help us somewhere.
So with respect to your question with regards to grants, each, there's no dedicated one person at this time. What each department does is they, for each of their projects, programs, and whatnot, they look for grant opportunities that are available as they start gearing up that particular process to look for those, such as any of those capital projects. If we were to find a state grant for the water project, we would use that funding first, and then reprogram those dollars away from capital projects to an alternative project in the future. Something that we, whatever is presented is not always static. It's something that we always explore, because grant dollars come as part of, like, the budget process, so those always circle around at different times, so we're always on the lookout for grant opportunities that become available on a per-department basis.
Okay, so, grants are looked at whenever you are starting a program or working on something?
The planning stages.
The planning stages.
Yeah, we also have, you know, as part of the California League of Cities, they also provide us, like, listings of potential available grants that might be coming, so that gets forwarded to staff for them to review and see if that's something that we're, we could utilize and apply for as well.
Okay, thank you.
Galilea in my office is looking at two potential grants, one for non-functional turf removal, and then also for our backyard trails potentially, so we are going to be applying for those as they come in. If Lizette receives anything, she does send it to the leadership team, and then we'll go through it and ask staff. If they do meet those qualifications, then we will go through there and, and apply for those as they come in.
Okay.
Going back to the grants, I'm glad she brought it up. Just food for thought. Grants can throw a lot of money into the budget. We have commissions for major R, we have commission, planning commissions. We have, why don't we decide, going off of that, is in the next month or two, start to help the city and create a commission of grant, a grant commission, where we have, we have a lot of smart people in Norco, and it can be a part, and I'm just throwing it out there, not, it can all change at the total end of the... We can even have a council person, or one, or two, no more than two, could actually sit on it, and it's not, and to be able to, and we can rotate them to where you get new faces, new ideas coming in every year or every two years, and to help the city, and you say, hey, look, you know, I got this grant, we look into it, and it's just food for thought. And it's, I'm just going off the top of my head right now with that, but that's all I gotta say. I concur with a lot of what's, what's been said about grants. I don't know if you guys know this, I was a grant writer for twenty-five years, and specifically, I wrote for museums, historians, architectural remodeling, things like that. I wrote hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of grants, more. And grant writing is a very specific skill. And so, like, for somebody in Park and Rec to try to find a grant in engineering or vice versa, I mean, one person in a diverse setting like this could not possibly write all the grants. My understanding is that we're already working well together in terms of grants. There's just not a lot of grants out there. So I don't know, I think it's a great idea if we could hire somebody, but boy, the breadth of knowledge that a person would have to write a grant for a city would be, it would be extraordinary. And so, I mean, my, I had a little niche of three things that I wrote grants for, and I knew nothing about other things. And then, the other part too, is that you write a grant, you almost never get it the first time, because they're looking at it, they want to see if you're able to pull your project off, and you usually maybe get the second, sometimes the third time. So it's a really difficult, very, very specific skill set. One of the things I didn't get the last time we were here, and I was speaking a little bit with the neighbor with this, and I, I couldn't put my finger on it, but I absolutely agree with Robin. I was going through just cutting things, and I'm going, well, if I cut that, what if that? And then I was, and I just couldn't. For me, public safety overrides everything, that's number one. Public safety, public safety, public safety. And, because people won't miss movies in the park, but they will miss it if I don't have a fireman there when their fires, when their house is burning down. And so, but just as an example, concerts in the park, it was a fabulous event the other night, but I didn't know we had a sixty thousand dollar donation pool. And then the other thing I was sort of brought to my attention is, we had a whole bunch of people working there. And I'm just wondering if maybe we should look at, I mean, sixty thousand dollars seems like it would be enough, maybe in terms of what you're talking about, maybe that's the kind of grants we look for. We look for, not so much grants, we look for donations. But I don't know if a city can do that. I don't know if you guys can, you know, actively have a donation thing where you're pulling money in. Maybe you can, maybe you can't, I just don't know what the law on that is. But there was a lot of people working there the other night, and do we really need all those people? And maybe an assessment throughout all the facilities, do we really need all these people? That said, I'm not that worried about, I know I should be, I'm not. I'm more focused on the mid-year budget. I want to know if, if, in fact, we will have Norco luck, if in fact, fire will come in lower, if in fact, we're able to find savings, especially given kind of where we're at right now. So... I don't know, what do you think, Joshua? What do you, what do you think? I mean, is it, I, I don't want to pull money out of pensions, I don't want to pull money out of medical, because we worked really hard to develop that. I really like Robin's idea, maybe thinking outside the box for the homeless program. What do you think about, for right now, we fund from the general fund, I don't like using one-time-only expenditures, but what if we do find out that our midterm things are a little bit more rosy? What, do you have your crystal ball, did you look at it this morning?
Let's say Lizette and I share a similar crystal ball. At the end of the day, the budget is a general estimate of what is gonna be expected, and yes, mid-year is great, that way we actually seize halfway through the year where we are, what have we received from there. What I would recommend is, right now, yes, the reductions are, are part of it, but right now, is any further reductions would impact services. So that's, that was our ask of council, is guidance in your direction, as you would want to leave the city, is what services do you want to scale differently? So that staff can use that direction and come up with different dollar estimates for those. So, like you said, public safety first in paramount, that's off the table. So, that's why we initially came...
And by the way, I include Matt's department in that too, so we're clear, because I'm very concerned that we may get hacked, attacked, and may not be able to. We're, we're literally, what, three incarnations behind in terms of our wiring system? And if you've ever been inside the place where literally our heartbeat is, it's like a closet.
Yeah, I've seen it. It is, cybersecurity is first in paramount, because everything is up in the cloud. Any assessment, that's why you did initially approve us getting the IT technician as part of the staffing going into the next fiscal year. So, with the available options, you could direct staff to go, go back and do further reductions, but right now, we are already dipping into reducing departmental discretionary funds, so those are pretty much at almost small, very small amounts. If you want us to reduce others, other services, we would appreciate your guidance in which services you would like for us, so that we can maintain that vision. If not, we can see what we can propose as options, as a menu, if you will, of areas that can be scaled down as far as services. Or we can see...
I like that option, you guys come back with something new for us.
Or it can be that we can see what mid-year comes up with and utilize a reserves. You do have a very, very healthy reserve that can write us out until we can see what those are, and then staff will then have time to do further assessments across the citywide, based on the discussions tonight, or this, today.
That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Joshua.
Good question. So, after the last workshop and leadership went back to the departments, how much were the departments asked to cut, or what were they told?
Oh, they were instruct, they were instructed to go back to their budgets, determine additional cuts that can be made based on, like, basically, if we have a contract that we have to increase five percent, obviously, they can't cut that, right? But to go back and look at their line items, that they don't have those constraints, and reduce those items to the bare bones, so that's, that was instruction. I didn't give them a specific, like, percentage, I just said, you know, because I don't know their contracts, right? Some of them might be, like, I don't know what those ties are, like, whether, you know, if Amanda has a landscape maintenance that is going to go up seven percent, you know, I'd be telling her to go cut that when the contract obligations there, it doesn't make sense. So that's why I didn't give them a specific percentage, but I did tell them to go back to determine what line items can be reduced to the bare bone.
And on those reductions, staff was guided to just do it based on contractual obligations, and that was it?
No, because the, the other part is they, they don't touch the salary part, it's just the non...
Yeah, no, I, I get that part, Lizette, but I'm just wondering, like, if somebody came, like, my principal came back to me and said, hey, Robin, make some cuts. Okay. I'm not gonna cut that deep, right? Because I don't want to be uncomfortable. And so, if somebody just came back and told me that, whereas if I got directive, okay, Robin, you need to cut ten percent and make sure you focus on our core values, which are one, two, three, and four. Now go back and talk with your team and make cuts. That's a whole different directive and a whole different mindset than leadership coming in and saying, hey, like, we gotta make some cuts. And so, you know, I know, Josh, that you said, yeah, discretionary is down to about zero, almost, but it's not zero, and it's discretionary, and we had, I made this statement the other day, when times are lean, you don't have discretionary funds. That's just the nature of the way it is. And so, you know, and I understand where Kevin's coming from, and I agree with him that, like, things aren't dire, right? And we can come back at mid-year. My concern with, okay, staff, just come back at mid-year, I feel like we've done the work and staff hasn't met us halfway. That's how I feel right now, to just be super blunt about it, because I'm, I'm getting frustrated that we've done the work and staff hasn't met us halfway. So for me, coming back at mid-year is not on the table at this point in time. If we'd come back and there was more on here, that staff had had some hard discussions, and that's the thing, you guys, I get it, and Josh, you're new, and we still have to, like, all come together as a team, but I don't think tough decisions and tough conversations were had among the staff. It was, hey, make some cuts and bring something back for council. And I don't want that culture to develop where we know going forward, we're gonna be in deficit spending, so I feel like we're just kicking this discussion another year out and not solving the real issue of why are we in deficit spending? And where can we make some adjustments so that we're not, and so that we have a balanced budget? So my preference would be, go back to staff, give them a percentage. I know I threw out like forty percent earlier, but if you want to go back and say, staff, I need you to cut five, or ten, or seven percent, or whatever, at least match the work that council has done. I would appreciate that a little bit more, because I don't think we've made the cuts, just like, and I appreciate that Councilmember Bash said, gosh, there are a lot of people working, and I would get, almost guarantee that because of our discussions, they probably pared it back a little bit for Friday night, because staffing, in my opinion, on some of those events has been excessive. And you see people standing around and not working. That's why I asked, like, what is everybody's designation at those things? If you're a part-timer working at Fourth of July, what are your assignments? What are you supposed to be doing? If you're a supervisor at Fourth of July, what are you supposed to be doing? What are your roles at that event? And that hasn't come back either, so I'm leaning more towards, let staff do a little bit more work and present something to us, either at another workshop or at the next meeting, knowing that we have other funds, we have, you know, the donation fund and some of those things where we can get through to mid-year, but just to give carte blanche and say, yeah, just come back at mid-year, I'm, I'm not there.
So, a few comments. I'm not in agreement with mid-year. Here's Mayor Protemas saying, but also, my concern with that is you, we're rolling the dice. You could come back in mid-year, we're, we're thinking, oh, things will be better. Things could be a lot worse at mid-year. And I don't feel like taking that risk at this, at this point. You can either jot these down, or...
You can either jot these down, or you can give me a couple of answers, I'm gonna classify these next statements as under not my job, but I made them my job, is questions. The three hundred thousand dollars that we contribute yearly, at, um, uh, for retirees. I recall, one year in the past, that, um, where we're, where we were, having, having struggles, I think we, deleted that three hundred thousand dollars for a payment one year. And, but with that, um, I think, we, we had some conversations that we could also reduce that three hundred, either scratch it completely this year, or could we put a hundred thousand dollars, to that fund, that, that is funded by water sewer.
So yes, current, currently in the budget, there's, uh, in the general fund, three hundred thousand, and I believe water and sewer have fifty thousand, that's contributed, fifty thousand each.
Fifty thousand, so, we, we could, or staff could give us both recommendations on either scratch the three hundred, completely, or that there's a possibility to at least fund it a hundred thousand.
Correct.
At this time, okay. Different funded positions, this would have been out of the, the current budget. Um, we have money set aside for, uh, building, uh, building official? Okay, um, building inspector, or is that gonna be something new? Since we lost our building inspector, but is there funding for a building inspector?
So yes, uh, those are, uh, the positions, those are currently being supplemented by outside contractors, and we do get, uh, cost recovery for those. Uh, uh, for most part now, and then will be aligned in the updated, uh, user fee study to at the, uh, rate that we have.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, let's say, go back to building official, that was funded in the current budget we're in now. Those monies.
The staff position, yes, and then, when that, that position became vacant, that those dollars then went to contractor to fulfill those responsibilities.
Okay. What I wanna do right now, if, with that, with those two positions, is stay contracting it out. Doesn't impact any retiree funds, any medical funds, and we should be at a hundred percent cost recovery, with those two positions. But I guess what I'm getting at, that money you set aside for building official, can that go, like, to general fund, can it go to reducing this deficit?
It is, it is, it is all in the general fund, so the positions and the contracts are on the general fund.
Are there any other positions that are vacant, that we can subcontract out? You don't have to answer at this time, but I think that's one thing staff should look at.
Which positions are vacant? We currently have the account clerk in finance, the animal control superintendent in community services, we just talked about the building inspector and building official. Uh, we currently have the deputy public works director, uh, position that we're requested to, um, convert to a public works manager, um, the IT analyst, the senior planner in community development, and, uh, the utility maintenance worker.
Okay, so those, all those departments can look at and come up with their ideas. And I'd like to look at that more as like wants and needs, can we, can tell me I want it today, or I need it today, but, can we get that, further down the road?
We'll look into that.
Pausing the park study. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know the value of that, approximately, or.
That was budgeted in measure R.
Okay.
That assessment.
Entirely budgeted in measure R. Currently, in this measure R budget, that was before you today, there was sixty-four thousand dollars budgeted there, we had discussed that previously, and we believe that that was already encumbered.
I believe so, but I don't, I'll, I'll find out what the total cost of that and where it's, uh, funded.
These are just things I'm throwing out there that, cause I think you're gonna have to get down to, a little tighter, if you can pause that study, because it can go, we can go ahead and get a study that says, yeah, we need a splash pad, we need a swimming pool, we need all these things that we have absolutely zero dollars for. Um, what's the process for raising the T O T tax? Pardon? An election of the residents? Okay, not like a two eighteen. It would require a majority vote or approval at an election. What's our current T O T tax?
Eleven, eleven percent?
Eleven? Colin, how illegal is it to have, like, different add-ons?
Add-ons to.
Yeah, the Norco resort fee, okay? Think about it.
Yeah, those would be, uh, if we add them on, those would be taxes, and if the voters approve it, the voters can approve taxes, so we can look at it.
Okay, but it's all voter approval.
It's all voter approval, yeah.
I guess it would, this would, just to comment to Sam and Amanda, um, your trail and your park maintenance, mentioned earlier with your subcontractors, okay? Not diminishing the work that they do, and I, I know we've negotiated contracts with them, but, Glacetti just mentioned, like, a seven percent increase in, in, in park maintenance through subcontractor?
Those, um, tho- those contracts are capped at four percent, uh, this year, a year. I think, um, priority came in, uh, below that at, like, three percent increase.
Okay. What I'd ask both of you to do, like I said, it's still under not my job, is to go back to them, they basically get this work handed to them.
No, it, it went through an R F P process with several other bidders.
Right, but, they're, they're our, our main contractors. They get change orders from us, whatever, they're taking care of us. Is there a way you can reduce their scope of work? And let's say, like, on trails, okay, that, instead of hitting a trail every six months, can you hit that trail every seven months or eight months? And try to drop, bring their costs down?
It's something to be considered, yeah.
I'm just asking you, renegotiate with your subcontractors.
Yeah, we could definitely take a look at that, and we could look at reducing maintenance as well, if.
Right, because, I mean, you can look at austerity measures, and this will be my last comments, but, you're gonna get to the point of that, we get to make the decision on what parks do you wanna close, okay? What fire station do you wanna close? Right, so, I'm, I'm not looking, this is all love and light, and let's wait till mid-year, because things will be better, I'm not buying it. And I'll leave it at this, Kevin, you, we were together on this, when we were down to nothing, okay? That, there's three things that stand out to me, what we did. Was the first thing, we got rid of one full-time employee that was not contributing at all. Within one week, all part-time employees were gone, and the third thing we did was we changed our fire department, to save three million dollars, I don't wanna get to that point. But, I'm not afraid, uh, you guys gotta make harder cuts, and just stop bullshitting around, because the direction this is going, we're gonna be in trouble. So that's where I'm believing my time is. I did temper that, Kevin, would you like to temper it a little bit more?
Yeah. So, first off, staff needs to understand you're doing the impossible. You have the Norco dilemma, and the reality is, is there's not a single city I can think of our size that offers the services that we offer. Not one. So literally, we dug ourselves out of a financial hole in the last fifteen years, and you literally are doing the impossible. For a city our size, with the rooftops we have, to have a full-service fire department, to have a full-service police station, to have a full service, all these things we offer, is impossible, it's not possible. It's not possible. So you're already doing the impossible. That's the context, the second context is, is the state of California. I mean, two days ago, I heard the governor's telling us we have a surplus. To quote Mr. Newton, bullshit. We do not have a surplus. Every city right now is freaking out, and the number one cause is the cost of public safety. That's the big issue. The reason we closed a fire station in Norco was because of mismanagement by a city manager, and a bunch of city council members many years ago that didn't know what they were doing. So they turned it into a park. No, 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 I'm talking about way, we, a long time ago, we never closed a fire station, and in fact, when we had no money, we didn't close our sheriff's substation. Which was very difficult, because people thought, oh, let's close it, two council people wanted to close it. We didn't close it, because we saved money by having our sheriff's substation. Um, the one thing we can't do, and I'm not suggesting anybody's doing this, is panic. Because we are not at the panic stage yet. I agree that maybe look, it's more internally in some of the things you're cutting, but some of the things I get nervous about, not paying into the retiree fund. We're in the state of California, now, you wanna piss off employees? Don't fund that, but also, you run the risk in the state of California, that, that if you stop funding things, and all of a sudden, they change the law, which you are around, all of us, I remember when everybody said, what's an unfunded liability, I remember Hal Clark, what's an unfunded liability? Well, it's cause the city went under and they were selling the artwork in the museum. Valencia, is that Valencia? Valencia. So, we're not there yet. The biggest problem we have is we can't save ourselves out of, the funding we need to run this city at the level we're running it. We can't, it's, it's like the water folks, they're building no infrastructure, I think I said this the other night, they're building no infrastructure whatsoever, and they think, okay, let's kill everybody's lawn and we'll save our water. It ain't gonna work, it's not gonna work here, we must develop another leg to fund what we need to fund. Cause the number one thing people want us to do is they wanna be safe, but along with that, they want to keep Norco, Norco. And the way you keep Norco, Norco is through a community event, I mean, one of the things that I realized is that basically, the mayor's ride on Fourth of July has been taken over by the Saddle sore riders. And I, and I didn't even notice that. So it's like, okay, we, maybe that's where we need to reach out and begin to look at, okay, so if we wanted to, Fourth of July, are we able to do it like they do it with the Norco fair, are we able to do things like that? But, I'm not gonna panic. And I, I mean, my God, I've been in the family business for seventy years. You, I can remember my parents and me walking at night going, whoa, gee, the school district just put in another pre-K program, hmm, what are we gonna do? And eventually, you, you've gotta work it out. So, I, again, I'm not saying that we wait till the midterm to sort of see what catastrophic thing's gonna happen. But, I think that, one, we need to make sure we understand we're doing the impossible, and we have to continue doing that. But two, I also think we've got to find that, that next leg. And we have one leg that we're not talking about, that also needs to be strengthened. And so, I think this is very doable, I think that the comments by both Greg and, and, uh, in fact, all the comments that I've heard, I think are things, what we really want is for staff to, to step up, and help us to help the residents in the city of Norco, that's really what we need, because I don't wanna be sitting here and saying, yeah, gee, we need to cut we people. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that, especially me, but I don't wanna say, okay, I mean, I'd like to keep the concerts in the park, I don't wanna keep the movies in the park, but at the same time, I'm being told by staff that they really like putting on these events. So maybe what staff needs to do is go back and say, which one do I really like to put on? And do things like that. But more important, the most important thing I want staff to know is, despite the problems we're having, I wanna thank you, you're doing the impossible, Amanda, I don't know how you build all the things you build, I have no clue. Sam, that little project on Hillside, how you figured that whole thing out, for, like, one resident, and you're gonna change the entire street for, like, nothing? How we get the fire and police that we get? I mean, and for Alma, the way you're running around with all the new laws coming at you, that's where we ought to get a full-time job, is somebody who just does nothing but look at the laws. Matt, what you're doing at the closet, you know, H R, all the things going on, and I just want you to know, I thank you. But now, we need to, I don't wanna go back to ten years ago. And also Finance Department, I didn't forget them too, but you're new, so, but I'm amazed at how you're sort of stepping up and you understand the situation. So, that's all I have, and I don't mean to con- contradict the mayor whatsoever, or anything that's been said, I totally get it. I just, I'm not gonna panic, and I just want staff to know, I'm not gonna panic, just not gonna panic. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
No, and, and I'm good with that, I'm just, I guess the overall statement is that, Kevin and I, years ago, it was desperate, I'm not freaking out with it, but, we drew some hard lines. Via, any, uh, anything else? Mr. Bowen?
If, uh, let's just say we go on, hypothetically speaking, we go in and we, that, we have to make a decision, like Robin said, and we cut a department, and all of a sudden, that department falls behind because of, behind on staffing, and they're not getting the money coming in, we could just screw up the whole process. And I agree that we should leave it to the experts. And I believe what Kevin said, you guys do a phenomenal job. And like Robin says, I don't think we can do little stuff that we see, but, I'm just afraid if we go in and start, you know, demanding you to cut something, it's gonna, cascade into something else, where we're gonna lose revenue coming in. Like, we do it to Building Department, and all of a sudden, yeah, we're still getting work done, but all of a sudden, these jobs that are coming in aren't paying, you know, they're impact fees, they're not getting permit fees. So we're losing out on jobs coming in, because people are saying they're so far behind, I'm gonna hold off on this project. We could mess that up for a split of homes, and that's it, and thank you, guys.
Robin? Okay, staff, any?
So, uh, thank you for the direction, I guess for one clarifying item, given the, uh, tall order of four point nine million, is just for, as an option to staff, is there a minimum deficit that you would be comfortable with, if not, we will take every measure available to get to the goal of presenting a balanced budget.
Not to be facetious, zero's a good place, a goal's a set, all right?
I, I just don't, I just don't want, um, you know, staff to go and say, okay, here's all my budget cuts, when reality, they need those funding. I guess my direction, or ask if it would be okay if, um, departments go back, review their budgets, and we come with a budget deficit of about, you know, half of what is it there, so two point five million? and we come with a budget deficit of about, you know, half of what is it there, so 2.5 million? Would that be appropriate for us to adopt the budget at 2.5 million and wait for mid-year with that deficit? Or do you wanna have another workshop to?
Okay, answer all these. I think we need one more workshop to make the final decision. Okay? Unless we can't get to that point. Before I ask my colleagues to speak, I believe, Robin, you had mentioned something around a million dollars earlier on today. That number kinda sticks in my mind, okay? But one of my other concerns is, I don't wanna this to fall back and go, we'll just take it out of measure R. That's what I wanna stay away from. That's I don't wanna say it's the people's money, but it's the people's money. So just kinda go around and give you a number. Greg?
I agree with you. I like zero, but.
Don't agree with me, okay? I don't wanna get you into a hole, don't do that.
May I ask a question before we go around? Would you like staff to come back with, as was previously asked, a menu of options that shows the level of service reduction based on or related to the cost reduction?
Are we okay with that?
Versus going around and saying a number? I did note Mayor Protem Grunmeyer's previous direction. She'd like to see departments cut their budgets to reduce the deficit to at least 50% of what's currently being presented, but at least once a million dollars in cuts by staff, not including what's already been cut.
Still your direction.
With that, and I, I wanna make it clear, I'm not asking you to I think, you know, austerity cuts or whatever. But I also feel like staff's super comfortable with where we're at. And it should be slightly uncomfortable right now with, given that we've had really good discussion, I think, this morning, and, and I agree with everything that's been said. And I agree with Kevin. But I want you to be just a little bit uncomfortable. Yeah, we're, I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable. This process has been uncomfortable. So I'm not asking for severe cuts that are gonna have severe impacts. It goes back to like what Kevin said. If my house is on fire, I want the fire department there. If I can go to a movie in the park, that's great, but I'm not gonna go complain at City Hall or complain to the council that a movie's gone. So those are the kind of the things that I want you to have in your head as you're making the cuts. I am not interested in reducing necessary services to our residents. That is not my, that is not my interest at this time, and I would, I would say from listening to discussion, that's not the interest of any of my colleagues on council. So just kinda keep that in mind. So I'm not necessarily, you know, I gave some dollar amounts earlier. Again, I just want this to be a team effort. That's what I want.
Via?
While I don't have a specific dollar amount, as I am obviously still learning this whole process, and even though I have attended a lot of the city council meetings in the past when you've been going over the budget, it is completely different now that I'm sitting in this seat. So all I would say is to get it as low as possible without obviously cutting the real services that the residents need. Thank you.
You've already said your piece, okay? Okay? Anything else? I know we have, yeah. Okay. So we'll continue this on, but right now I'm gonna ask the city clerk, do we have any public comments?
Naylor? I guess.
Morning, Bill.
Good morning. I sat and listened to the numerous discussions on this, and I've kind of been in your positions years ago when I was working, and council came back and said pretty much what you guys have said. Come back staff with recommendation for cuts. And what they did was they said, come back with a, a three-point thing. One was like a 5%, another one was a 7%, 10%. I'm recommending that you come through with a 5% cut, a 10% cut, and a 15% cut. That way, you guys have kind of prioritized what your needs are and what you feel the community needs. If you've got those three different levels, some may get cut five, some may get a cut 15, but at least now you're giving council the opportunity to make some decisions based on your recommendations. Right now, you're asking them to, to just say, huh, let's slash and burn. We don't want, I don't think they wanna do that. And it's not really a good way to do it. You guys work with the budgets day in and day out, and I think that's, you're the ones that know it. I have a couple of other comments. One is, I made comments a year or two ago when we were talking about expanding the trails maintenance program to include the backyard trails. I still like the backyard trails being included, but I think they should have been included in the overall budget and reduced a little bit of the services on the other part of it, 'cause I think they could have, your, your trail maintenance guys or contract would have been happy to keep the same budget, just spread the work out a little bit. Wouldn't, you'd save probably $50,000 a year. There's just little things that you can do to make this thing work, but you really need to get within the budget that you can live with. We cannot reserve, go back to reserves, and we cannot depend on measure R to bail us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments?
No further, Mayor?
I just have one question. Would the consensus be on the homeless program to move that to public safety? Or wait till the next budget workshop and leave it as is for now?
I'll ask the Mayor Protem.
I think Kevin kind of alluded to it the other day. At some point in time, our public safety costs are gonna get to the point where we're gonna have to go to measure R. You look at our intent and purposes of our homeless solutions. It is a public safety issue, keeping right of way clear and clean, allowing people access to businesses without feeling intimidated. That kinda stuff. You know, Deputy Wittenberg is the primary contact and force behind that program at this particular point in time with, you know, going down to the river and cleaning up, making contact with folks that are coming through the community, getting them bus passes, doing those types of things. So just seems to me like it would be a more appropriate fit. And I think just in our first kind of pass-through on the budget and looking at every, it's like, oh my gosh, community services skyrocketed, you know, in that particular budget, that it was just kind of a shock to see that, and I mean, I know that Alejandra's the point person for the city on that particular program, but I just feel like it's a better fit under public safety.
So are you just shifting the money? We're not not changing the homeless program and putting the burden on the sheriffs?
No, it's a shift moving where that money, it's just a shift.
Okay.
And where it shows up, instead of showing up in community services, it would show up under a public safety area.
On that side of the ledger.
Yeah.
The set? That was it? Okay, any comments, staff comments? Wanna throw anything? Here's your chance. If not, we're adjourned.